Hello, everyone. We'll call the Select Board meeting to order today, October 4th, at 7:32 PM. A motion to open the meeting.
So made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Let's, if you're able, let's stand and salute our flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone, for joining us here tonight. In accordance with Governor Baker's Declaration of June 16, 2021, granting certain pandemic-related authorizations related to public board and town meetings, and recently extended until March 31, 2023, this meeting will be conducted both in person and virtually via Google. To join via Google Meets, https://meet.google.com/vhd/qdts-ami. The meeting may be recorded by SMAC cable television and broadcast live, and may be livestreamed at www.stoughtonTV.org. A recording of the meeting transcript and other comprehensive record of the proceedings will be posted on the town's website and/or SMAC as soon as possible after the meeting, if live broadcast or livestreaming is unsuccessful. Times are approximate, and items may be taken out of order at the chairman's discretion. With that, let's open with citizens' comments. Yes, Ms. Walsh, please step forward. State your name and precinct. Happy to see you.
We do a lot of talking about diversity, but I can't believe that the Board of Selectmen is meeting on Yom Kippur, the most solemn day of the Jewish calendar. It's on my calendar at home, so maybe you need a new calendar that has everybody's holidays on it, because past Boards of Selectmen have made an effort not to meet on Passover, Yom Kippur. And diversity isn't just about race. It's also about religion. It's also about economic levels. And I just, I looked at the calendar and I couldn't believe it. I'm surprised that Rabbi isn't here, but I shouldn't be surprised, because obviously he's with his people on this day of fasting. I just think it's disgraceful.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh, for bringing that to our attention. We'll do a better job going forward. Thank you. Any other citizens' comments? Okay, well, let's move right along, and that is Select Board's comments. Mr. Carrera. Okay. Mr. Cavey.
No comments. Thank you.
Mr. Gito.
Yes, I have one. I'd like to give a shout-out to the DPW Director and his staff. They did three miles of major repair work this year at a cost of about $1.4 million. And I'll mention the roadway areas, because I think a lot of people should go up and take a look at that. There's been a lot of discussion about roadway work being done and the need for it, and I think it would be helpful for people to see what actually can be done if you put your money, your heart, and your soul into it. We've got about 20 miles of roadway needing major repairs. That translates into about $10 million of repair work. There's another 37 million miles of roadway that need minor repair work, and that work would cost about $4 to $8 million. So we've got quite a bit of a backlog in work there. As I mentioned before, Easton does about 13 miles a year. We did three, and I think we used a couple years of Chapter 90 money to do that. So I'd suggest you, people, go up and look at the Bento Road and Low Avenue area, the Bassett Circle and Queen Anne Way area, the Vanstone Road area, and the Barnes Road, Larson Road, and Lurie Circle area. Those areas have had their roads redone, and they look fantastic. And I hope we can do more of them. Thank you. And I thank the DPW Director again.
Thank you, DPW. Great job. Mr. McCrisky, do you have any comments?
Just one, Madam Chair. If I may, I see an email that was sent to us on Thursday, September 29 regarding the noise level of gunshots coming from the fishing game. I'm not qualified to decide what gunshots allowed and not. I would ask, if it hasn't been done, that we forward this to the police department and let them follow up, you know, on behalf of the resident, because, again, I'm not, I know Scott knows a lot about the fishing game. But, again, the resident has lodged a complaint, and, you know, the complaint should be followed up if it hasn't been done. So I would ask that that be done, unless there's a reason it shouldn't be tonight.
Thank you.
And I did have one more. I know Scott wants to respond.
No, go ahead, Joe.
No, no, it's a different issue. So let's finish this one.
On the gun issue, noise level isn't a factor. That gun range is pre-existing, non-conforming to all current laws. They abide by what is mass laws to a point, but they actually rolled back their starts. I'm a member of the club that owns the property, which is CW Welsh. So there's two clubs there. They all shoot at the same time sometimes, sometimes they don't. But as far as firing, the noise level is not a factor. It's a range. It's open. It meets all the safety requirements, and people know it's there. So you can complain all you want, but the only complaints that can be made is prior to sunrise and after sunset. That's when there's no shooting allowed.
Okay. Well, like I said, I just want to follow up. The resident took the time to send a request in. We should at least get that resident a written response from somebody that's better in the know than me.
Well, it should be addressed to CW Welsh Memorial Fishing Game, which is the owners.
We can let the police department do that.
If they're going to make a formal complaint to the police department.
A request. We're not making a complaint. A resident has brought a concern forward that has to be addressed, in my opinion. Let the resident get that response from the police department, or if the police department talks to CW Welsh or Fishing Game.
Alls I want to say is this board can't dictate to the gun club.
I'm not saying dictate anything. I'm saying that the resident gets a response. That's all. Plain and simple.
All right. We'll follow through on that.
Okay, and one more issue. We know we've been dealing with traffic issues on Walnut Street, and I don't know who has received calls, but I've received more than, you know, I should on an issue like this. We've been talking about, I know we're taking some steps on a plan that we've put in place, but more than one person would like to see a truck exclusion. I don't know what Mass Highway would say about that. I know that we've had roads that are in worse shape that has been refused. So what I'd like to do, at least for the residents, so that, again, they feel they're being heard, is that we put on the next agenda, the possible vote of sending a request for a truck exclusion to Mass Highway, that we go through the engineering department to do that, and DPW, if there's anything they need, but I think it's more the engineering, and that we at least request a truck exclusion and then engage in a conversation, whatever we have to do to address that for the residents, because we all know with the lights at that road, the traffic amount has increased, and truck drivers know how to get around, you know? And when there's a set of light there, it's easier to go that way now, because it doesn't back up as much. So it, again, the residents have a right to be heard, and so I'd ask that we put that, I'd make that a motion, if I could put that on for the next agenda.
Second.
And thank you, Scott. And then get everybody involved that needs to be involved to at least show the residents that we're taking their concerns, you know, into consideration. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So I have a second. There's a motion on the table. All in favor?
Wait a minute. Can I just? I have received calls like Mr. McCrisky, and I'm glad Joe brought it up, because I was going to bring it up, and I didn't, I figured the agenda was big, heavy tonight, so I didn't want to get on it. But I think it's a very serious thing we've got to look at, because those trucks are on that street. I was coming up Park Street, and I couldn't believe it. Triaxle tanker went through the red light coming down the hill, through their set of lights. Because, and I know what truck it was, I'm not going to say it on the open air, but it went across that street, and it was probably yellow when he was peeking the hill, and he can't stop. And that's the problem we're going to have there, is we're going to have to do something about it, because they're not going to stop in the winter. If the Public Works aren't out there right away, they're going to be coming through that, down that hill. There's too much of a grade there for that kind of heavy truck traffic.
Madam Chair.
Chair.
Mr. McCrisky, would you please just repeat the motion? I didn't hear it.
Okay. The motion would be that we put on the next agenda the issue of a truck exclusion on Walnut Street.
Thank you.
And then it forward, after that vote's taken, it be forwarded to the police department and the engineering department to begin that process. I believe most of it will be done on the engineering department, but, you know, just to make sure the safety officer is aware of it as well, because they're going to be dealing with it as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So there's a motion on the table, and a second. Can I get a vote? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And Mr. Gito, I believe you.
I said aye.
Okay. And aye as well. So the, I would like to take my time and allocate it to Acting Chief of Police, Brian Holmes. Can you please come forward? He has an acknowledgement for one of his police officers, and I fully endorse this time to allow him to talk. Chief Holmes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, honorable members. Ms. LeBlanc, it's a privilege and it's an honor to be able to recognize and represent the fine work of one of the members of the Stoughton Police Department, Officer Steve Kamara, tonight, in front of yourselves, the townspeople, and several of his peers in the back of the room here tonight. Officer Kamara is an eight-year member of the Stoughton Police Department. He is a trusted member of the field training team, which means that when academy graduates leave the police academy and enter the department, they have to spend a good, solid month with Officer Kamara and other members of the field training team. So it's a trusted position. He's a fine police officer. We trust the work that he does. Tonight, we'll be recognizing him for the department's Life Saving Medal. I'm going to read what it is first. "The Life Saving Medal has been established for law enforcement personnel and recognizes an officer or team of officers who, through direct medical intervention or other measures, is or are responsible for saving a life. Actions include cardio-pulmonary resuscitation, Heimlich maneuver, or other actions taken for the preservation of life. The action taken actually results in the preservation of a life. Recipients of this award will receive a written citation, a plaque, and a uniform ribbon designated as a Life Saving Medal, as blue, white, and a blue-and-white ribbon. On October 1, 2022, while on patrol, you observed a vehicle in a commercial parking lot located on Canton Street as you were proceeding to another call. When you learned that your assistance was not needed, you returned to the area and investigated further. The business was closed, and this was the only vehicle in the area. A closer look revealed that the driver's door of the vehicle was open, and the operator was inside and unresponsive. You quickly assessed the driver and notified dispatch to send EMS. It was determined that the driver was the apparent victim of a fentanyl poisoning. You quickly administered Narcan and maintained a consistent level of patient care until the arrival of EMS. But for your actions, observation skills, and devotion to duty, the patient may not have survived. Your actions reflect great credit upon yourself and reflect the highest traditions of the Stoughton Police Department. You are now authorized to wear the department's Life Saving Medal. Madam Chair, thanks for your time on short notice. I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. And this is an example of what the Stoughton police officers do. They protect and serve, so congratulations. Moving right along, so our town manager, Mr. Tezdel, is not in today due to illness of the family, so we will move right along to our next item, and that is consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Did you want to pull something, Mr. Carrera?
Yes, please. I won't be voting on the minutes of, under B, the 9:15 minutes. I wasn't present, so that's all I want to straighten out.
Let the records reflect, Ms. LeBlanc. All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. It is, I can't see the clock. It is 7:50. I would like to use my privilege to move Agenda Item Number 12 to the front, and that Agenda item is Request from Stoughton Youth Lacrosse to amend the license agreement with Town of Stoughton in order to improve Mark's Field. Will the representative of this Agenda item, please step forward, state your name and address?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
If I may, I'd be prepared to make a motion, just so that, I think, some of the petitioners know the position of the board, if you would allow me to do that this time.
Yes.
I would make a motion right now, follow up, but I would make a motion to approve the request of Stoughton Lacrosse, so people know, at least we're some of us, you know, on that. So if we can get that on the floor, then we'll discuss the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Vote aye as well, for discussion purposes. Vice Chair Cavey?
Yeah, so I did write a letter to, that's included in everyone's package. I just want to read through it. I think that the ways listed on our Agenda for tonight is a little unclear, so I just wanted to read this, just to make sure that everyone's clear, on exactly what we're voting for. So the letter reads, "Fellow members of the Stoughton Select Board, I am writing to you to clarify the purpose of this Agenda item and to make clear the specific requests being made of the Select Board. Stoughton Youth Lacrosse leases Mark's Field from the Town of Stoughton for purposes related to their athletic programming. They wish to make improvements to this land and would like to request funding for, sorry, from the Community Preservation Act Committee to finance design work. The CPAC has approved the projects pre-application, which means they believe CPA funds can be used as a funding source, but they believe they cannot accept a full application until the Stoughton Select Board votes to allow Stoughton Youth Lacrosse to zip it, due to their reading of the language within the lease agreement between Stoughton Youth Lacrosse and the Town of Stoughton. Therefore, our role is to vote on the following question: Will the Stoughton Select Board allow Stoughton Youth Lacrosse to submit an application to the Community Preservation Act Committee in order to apply for funds to finance design work for Mark's Field?" The CPA, just for everyone's awareness, the CPA, CPAC application deadline is October 25, which is right around the corner, and then I've also, with the Agenda package, you have received a copy of the lease agreement and materials related to their pre-application to the CPAC.
So I asked our guest, please state your name and address, and if you had any other information you wanted to share.
My name is Mike Supin. I'm the president of Stoughton Lacrosse. I'm here tonight with some parents and players that have passed the present board members, Ruby, Anna Santana, Kelly Exipen, and we are here to support some applications.
Vice Chair Cavey, did you want to share something else?
No, I just wanted to make sure that it was clear. I know there was some additional information in the package that was not related to this Agenda item, and just wanted to make sure that wasn't, didn't confuse anybody and didn't send us in the wrong direction. But my understanding is that the CPC or CPAC has asked you to come before the board to essentially endorse or to, you know, allow you to submit this application, and this application is only for design work. And after that's completed, and just, and, you know, you've gone through all the processes of getting that design work done, which would include, you know, public input and whatnot, at that point, you'd have an actual plan that you, with that, come to us at some later point and say, you know, say that this is what we're, this is what we have our design, this is what we're looking to do. And then at that point, the Select Board would sort of give the yea or nay, the thumbs up or the thumbs down. I suspect you'll be okay, though, but at that point. But the, we'll give you the up or down on that, and then at that point, you could then begin the actual work, which is probably, I'm guessing, not within the next year, right? You're doing the design work first, and probably the actual work would take some place sometime after December 31st, or after, I guess it'd have to be after the annual town meeting, so it'd be quite a while from now.
That is correct. That's my understanding.
Okay. Excellent. I've got no other comments.
Okay. It's clear on my end. Did my fellow board members have any questions?
I'll comment to them. I appreciate that you did go to all the residents and have them sign. That saves a lot of legwork. Thank you.
Mr. Gito?
So we're voting on the sentence that says, "Will the Stoughton Board of Selectmen allow the youth commission to submit an application?" Is that correct?
Correct. Yes.
Quite frankly, so happy that something wonderful is going to be happening to that field. And I think Lacrosse is a wonderful game. I mean, it's just remarkable. And it's something that's just started up in Stoughton a few years ago, and I hope that you get a whole, large crop of people to come and play. Thank you very much for all the work that you're doing.
Mr. McCrisky?
No questions, Madam Chair.
And I have no questions either. There was a motion on the table. We discussed it. Are we ready to vote? I'll call by name. Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Mr. Cavey?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cavey. Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
And Mr. Gito?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Look forward to seeing that design.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. Be well.
It is now 7:57. Public hearings start at 8:00 PM. We may have time to, three minutes or so, to have an update on Community Paradigm, and then go back and order.
Yeah, so I will give a brief update, if it's okay. I'd like to give a very quick update, and then when we get back to, when we get to that item, we'll give a more robust version of this. But I did want to answer a question that Mr. Gito had asked in the past, which was, he wanted to know who the screening committee was. So I wanted to provide that to you. The screening committee, this is from an email that I received from Bernie Lynch. I can forward it to you. It reads, "The screening panel of five people will be Mr. McCrisky, or Joe, Sharon from Community Paradigm, Bernie Lynch from Community Paradigm, myself, and Steve Cavey, and then also the fifth member is John Petron. John works with us on recruitment and other municipal projects. He's a 40-year municipal professional, the former town administrator of Burlington, and held similar positions with Ashland, Harvard, and Prepperell. He was also the Assistant Superintendent of Schools for the City of Marlborough. He's currently the Program Coordinator of the Suffolk MMA Local Government Certificate and Municipal Finance Program, and former President of the Massachusetts Municipal Management Association and the Massachusetts Municipal Association. He's also a board member and treasurer of the Massachusetts Police Accreditation Committee and a member of the Massachusetts Joint Labor Management Committee." So I wanted to give you just what I had on him. He was, upon working with him, he was a very helpful, kind man, and I think he was very impartial. He had no skin in the game in this one, but at the same time, I think he provided us with some really helpful insights. So that was to your question. For the candidates, I'll give a very quick update. We'll go through the candidates when we get to that item on the agenda. For the time being, I'll let you know that we, Joe and I and the screening committee did interview seven candidates on Monday and Tuesday of last week. We narrowed the list down to five candidates that we wanted to bring to the Select Board. Of those five, one of them has since pulled his application. He's no longer pursuing the role of Town Manager for Stoughton. I did not ask his reasons. He might have, I'm assuming he was looking at other towns as well. But we, one candidate did decide to not go any further, which leaves us with four candidates. We've received documentation of, a full package from Bernie related to those four candidates. I'll forward those along to you, and when we get to this item again, I'll go through the names and brief information that we have on those four candidates. Yeah, everyone's getting it. Everyone's going to get it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cavey.
Of course. Thank you very much.
It is now 8 o'clock, and we're ready to start with our Common Vic application. Blessed experience. First, we're going to read into the record. I asked Vice Chair to read into the records. And will the owners or representative please step forward? After, the process will be, after Vice Chair Cavey reads into record, we'll have a motion to open the public hearing. We'll go through, Vice Chair Cavey will go through the checklist again, and then we'll hear from the owner or the representative. Then the board will ask the owner questions, any questions they have. The citizens will have an opportunity to ask questions, make comments. And then the board will ask more questions if needed, and then the owners will make final comments. We'll close the public hearing, and then motion to approve the application or take action on the application. With that said, Vice Chair Cavey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Town of Stoughton, Notice of Hearing. A public hearing- A public hearing will be held by the Select Board on October 4th, 2022, to consider the application of Blessed Experience for a Common Vicular license at 756 Washington Street, Stoughton, Massachusetts 02072. Hearing to be held at 8:00 PM. The hearing will be conducted at the Great Hall, Third Floor Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Massachusetts, and via Google Meets, and broadcast via Stoughton Media Access Television and Live Stream. Google Meets video link and telephone connection for public comments available by calling the Stoughton Select Board at 781-341-1300, extension 9212, or email dleblanc@stoughton-ma.gov by before, by or before 4:00 PM on October 4th, 2022, per order of Deborah C. Roberts, Chair, acting as local licensing authority.
I'll accept a motion to open the public hearing.
So made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Vice Chair Cavie, please go through the checklist.
Thank you very much. In the checklist, all of our departments commented with no objection. This is the Police Department with no objection, the Fire Department, no objection, Board of Health, no objection, Building Department, no objection, Treasurer, no objection, and Water Department, no objection.
Well, hello. Please say your name again. I know we kind of caught you off guard. Can you please push the button so you can see the green light? Yes.
Okay, sure. My name is Lodz Nicholas. I said, do you ask me for my name on here?
Yes, please tell us a little bit about your establishment.
Okay, so it's a diner at 756 Washington Street in Stoughton. I believe that it's always been like a diner or restaurant, so that's where we are going to be, and that's where we are planning on opening an American and Caribbean cuisine restaurant.
That is so wonderful.
Thank you.
Do my fellow board members have any questions to ask? No questions?
I do, but they're always the very friendly ones, which, everything is in order, everything looks good, your paperwork-wise, but I always just love to hear what's on the menu. You know, because I'm definitely going to be there.
Thank you.
So tell me what's your, what kind of food you're serving, and if you have any recommendations or specialties.
Oh, definitely.
Tell me all about it.
Because, I mean, we spoke to many people in the town, and they said they really are looking for variety in what they want to eat. So we're gonna have breakfast, and not only American breakfast, you know, regular eggs and pancakes, but we also have Caribbean breakfast, which is plantains with eggs and fish, and we're gonna have rice and beans, oxtail stew, beef stew, so definitely beef stew would be good. So we'll be waiting for you.
I'll be there, I promise. Yeah, that was my only question, and thank you very much for considering Stoughton for opening a business. And the location is right in the middle of town, and so I hope everybody will have a chance to swing by.
Definitely. Thank you.
Great, great. Any other comments? Okay, we'll go right to citizens. Any citizens' comments at this time? That would be, oh, yes.
What hours are you hoping to be open?
So I was looking to close around 10:00 PM.
And what time are you open?
Around 7:00 AM for breakfast night.
Seven days or?
Seven days, yes.
That is wonderful. Any other questions? Okay.
Motion to close the hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
So nice meeting you.
Nice to meet you.
I'll be there, too.
Yes, I was gonna say, I've been expecting everybody to come and, Deborah. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we'll get the license tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Have a good evening.
You, too.
Okay, it is now 8:07. You think we can squeeze in the, what can we squeeze in?
So I can finish up with the update on the Community Paradigm.
Do you think the, before we do that, do you think the item number eight, special town meeting, insert the articles and take a vote on the warrant? That would be? You haven't seen the articles?
They're in your folder. I haven't just gotten them.
This folder? That's why I didn't see them.
Okay. Well, then, if that's the case, then, yes, that's the case. Vice Chair Cavie?
Sure. I apologize, I have to read off my phone. I've forgotten my password, and it's somewhere. So I'm not able to read it off my computer, but I got, received a package from Bernie Lynch with the finalists for the, with the list of the names of all the finalists for the Stoughton Town Manager position. It looks like they're listed in alphabetical order, so I'll just read them off and give you a very, some brief information that we have about them. The first is Jonathan Beeter. He is currently head of DPW in Plymouth. Apologies, move through this. The next finalist is Thomas Colter. He's, was currently, or sorry, recently, the town administrator for the Town of Kingston. Before that, he was also a member of the Massachusetts State House of Representatives, representing the 12th Plymouth District. He represented that district from 2007 to 2018. The third finalist is Michael McGovern. He is currently the town administrator for the Town of Shirley. Before that, he was, so he's been there from 2018 to present. Before that, he was the Assistant City Manager for the City of Lowell from 2014 to 2018. And he has sort of, actually, before that, before that, 2003 to 2014, he was the Coordinator of School Information and Director of School Foundations for the Greater Lowell Technical High School. And the fourth candidate is Yvonne Spicer. She is, Dr. Spicer is a, her most recent position was as the Mayor for the City of Framingham. She was the mayor from 2018 to 2022. And before that, her background is in education. I think she was working most recently at the Museum of Science as the Vice President of Advocacy and Educational Partnerships.
No, 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 no. The first, first name you called.
Jonathan Beeter. Jonathan Beeter, so as I mentioned, he's, and I didn't give quite as much information about him. His most recent position, or where he currently is working, is as the Head of DPW for the Town of Plymouth. And let me see if I can get a little bit more background. You'll receive the entire package, so you'll have all of this, but I want to be able to give the public a little something, too. He is a Stoughton resident as well. The only applicant that is a Stoughton resident. Okay. Unless people are running past it. So, yeah, Director of Public Works for the Town of Plymouth, Massachusetts. Before that, he was the, I'm gonna come on, okay, these, he was the Engineering Inspector, Senior Engineer, Assistant Town Engineer, and Acting Town Engineer in the Town of Stoughton, in the Stoughton Engineering Department. He held those various roles from 1997 to 2008.
Thank you for that update, Vice Chair Cavie. Mr. Gito had some comments and suggestions to keep us organized. He submitted them.
I presume that we're going to get the information soon.
I'll send it tonight. I just wasn't able to do it from my computer.
I hope we have a couple of weeks to sort of do a background check our own on this before we, before we interview them.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, which is basically what I sent out to everybody.
Yeah, so you'll have the package tonight.
You know a lot of detail on that. I think we're all on the same page, just, let's just move on. I'm interested in seeing all the information, and thank you very much for the work.
Absolutely. My thought is, you'll have the package tonight. I'll send that, make sure that's in everybody's inbox tonight. So our next scheduled meeting is two weeks from now. We have four candidates. I don't know if the 18th has, I'm assuming that you already have items on that agenda. My thought is that with four candidates, we ought to consider having a meeting that really is only focused on this one question. So we may choose to meet the following week, which I don't know the exact date, but they would, like, run the 25th or so. We'd meet on that Tuesday to discuss only this item, to interview the four candidates, and then to either make a choice that night, or what I think would be more reasonable is to wait for the following meeting, which would be the first meeting in November, to vote on who will take that role as the Town Manager.
I agree with that approach. I also would like some time to discuss coordination, like, where will they, what day should we have a separate day for the interview of all the candidates, and where will they wait? You know, logistics such as that, and we need to get, before we make a decision, we need to also transfer funds so we can cover salaries before their first day. So these are some of the things we, as a group, should discuss before, sooner than later.
So my math was right. So the, so in three weeks, that would be October 25th. My recommendation is that we meet that night, that we interview all four candidates on the 25th, that's three weeks from now, and that we make a determination and a vote on November 1st.
Mr. Gito?
You said something about questions, and I didn't hear what you said about that.
If it was me, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't mean to, I didn't make any statement about questions, but I would say that we have three weeks to do the background work we need to do with regard to these candidates, to reach out to people that they have offered as contacts, you know, and to honestly do whatever other sort of work we want to do to help us make this decision individually. We would interview on the 25th all four candidates, and this would be a meeting, this would be off of our regular cycle of meetings, so it'd be an extra meeting, but it would be focused only on this one question. We would then vote on November 1st. So we'd give ourselves a week to digest the interviews, to ask any, sort of work through any follow-up questions, and then vote on that following meeting.
I heard the word "question" again, and I didn't hear all the words around that. Did you say "one question"?
Or is it a question? Anything that you, you know, if any background work you would like to do during that three-week period, that gives you plenty of time to answer those questions for yourself. I'm not saying anything about the meeting itself and how many questions you're gonna ask. That, I think we...
That's what I thought you were talking about, and I think we should think about.
Yeah, and that I, we can discuss, you know, I...
Everybody's not the same, I guess, and so we need to, if you're, if you're hiring somebody to paint your house, you may ask the same question of each person, but you might not want to do that if you're dealing with four people for a job like this with different backgrounds.
Yeah, and I would leave that to the chair's discretion and how she wants to manage that meeting. You know, we can each get 10 minutes, you know, or to ask questions, or five minutes, I guess, if we're trying to get through four candidates. We're gonna have to be thoughtful of time, because it could turn into a four-hour meeting if we each get 10, 10 minutes.
We may want to, if you don't mind, can we do, we may want to think about having meetings on Tuesday and Wednesday and do two-on-two. You could do that, too, because if you do four people in one evening, that's, that's a good chunk, especially for a position like this. So I just, keep your mind open a little bit on that for at least...
My concern is that it's not biased the later candidates, right? To offer them an opportunity to watch the meetings, to see what questions were asked, which ones worked, which ones didn't, and to have an advantage, because they were picked for the second round of meetings. But I agree, I agree.
Okay. Mr. Carr, and then we wanted to go to our next public hearing.
If you were gonna do the candidates, you're gonna do it on just one night, right? That would be the whole meeting?
That's my recommendation.
I can see Steve's point, but I can see Lou's point, too, that it should be two-on-two, but if somebody can see the meeting, then it could be a little tricky. So it might have to be a one-shot deal.
We can talk about that. Maybe we can start a little bit earlier. Right. Okay, everyone, we're moving, we can come back to that item, but let's go to our next public hearing, which is the Common Vic application, Right Taste Jamaican Restaurant. Will the, hello, please step forward, state your name, and, I'm sorry, before you do that, please step forward, and we have a process, and it's the same process as the previous. We need to read it into the record and then open the public hearing, but please have a seat and make yourself comfortable. Vice Chair Cavie?
Thank you. Town of Stoughton, notice of hearing. A public, sorry, a public hearing will be held by the Select Board on October 4th, 2022, to consider the application of Right Taste Jamaican Restaurant for a Common Vicular License at 354 Washington Street, Stoughton, Massachusetts 02072. Hearing to be held at 8:15 PM. The hearing will be conducted at the Great Hall, Third Floor, Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Massachusetts, and via Google Meets, and broadcast via Stoughton Media Access Television and Live Stream. Google Meets video link and telephone connection for public comment available by calling the Select Board Office at eight, sorry, 781-341-1300, extension 9212, or email dleblanc@stoughton-ma.gov by before 4:00 PM on October 4th, 2022, per order of Deborah C. Roberts, Chair, acting as the local licensing authority.
Motion to open the public hearing?
So made.
All in favor?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and I vote aye as well. Vice Chair Cavie, please review with us the compliance checklist.
Sure. Stoughton, sorry, the Stoughton Police Department had no objections to the application. Fire Department had no objections. The, sorry, one second. Yeah, so the Board of Health? I got myself a little bit mixed up here. I apologize. Yes, sorry, Board of Health. Board of Health did have some comments, but ultimately no objections. The comments, new applicant has applied to the Board of Health for a food... new applicant has applied to the Board of Health for a food permit to operate. Board of Health will conduct a pre-opening inspection just prior to the business officially opening to the public and ensure compliance with the state food code. Board of Health has no objections to the Common Vicular license, order of seating of seven, and Board of Health application. And there's also no objections from the Building Department, the Treasures Department, and the Water Department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please say your name again, and--
My name is Donovan Francis, Wright Taste Jamaican Restaurant.
Tell us a little bit about the restaurant.
Well, so far, we cook American food and Caribbean food. We do like jerk chicken, oxtail, curry goat, steak, shrimp, fish, and stew, and steak.
It's on.
Okay. All right.
Good stand.
Well, I'll repeat that, what I said. We do curry goat, oxtail, steak, stew chicken, curry chicken, jerk, jerk pork, and fish. Yeah.
Sounds good.
With rice and peas, white rice, and yellow rice.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Board, did you have any questions for the owner of this Jamaican, Wright Taste Jamaican Restaurant? Yes, Mr. Carr.
I had more likely a few concerns. The Board of Health had no objection, and then it says the owner indicated for seven seats. And in the application, it says that it's only for takeout, that it doesn't say any seating. And there was a seating plan that you can't make heads or tails out of. I don't know if you guys got a better one than I did, but it's not very helpful. And if you notice in the application, it was stat, and there was no number of counter seating, no total seating. It just said "takeout." So-- And there was no, what's that?
Takeout doesn't require a Common Vicular license. It's only for sitting.
Well--
Eating restaurants.
What are we doing? I understand people are in eating. Is that right?
Yes. First, when we tried to open it, to apply, we applied for three bars, stool table, and two round table with two each tier around that place.
So originally, it was--
Yeah, we was apply for--
You had seats, and then you changed it to takeout, and now you are here for a Common Vic license because you have people that are on premises eating, correct?
Yes, but they, when we, when we apply for the takeout, we also apply for the seat because they allow us, they told us that they allow us with, I think, five tiers around inside here.
So, Mr. Carr, this is the diagram you're looking at, and there's no place for seats? That's what you're saying? I mean, it's not--
No, there's nothing, there's nothing down there. How can, how can building pass that and tell me to vote for it? I'm not, I'm not blaming him. We got two people who said there's no problem. Am I, if you don't want me to discuss this, I'm not going to vote on it because it's not the proper application in front of you. You're talking about a proven takeout, and people are in there seating.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If I may--
Floor plan. This is the question on the table, the floor plan.
Right, yeah. It, I did go, do you have seating right now? People are eating inside the restaurant right now?
No.
No? Okay.
Just a bar counter, like--
Right. I saw that because somebody had mentioned something to me in the past, and I went by there, and I looked myself, and there was no indoor seating. So I thought this application was just to allow the indoor seating, but I agree with you. You know, applications that have come before us, whatever the seating is, they're supposed to show the seating, the way it's going to be positioned. It's there as a guideline because once they're allowed X amount of seating, they can move it around. It just can't exceed that capacity. I understand what you're saying, Scott, but if we're allowing to have seating, where they show it on a plan can be moved at their discretion within the layout of the area. So, but I want to, I want to stick with that. If there's a reason that we should change it, then we should talk about that. But right now, I agree that we don't have a seating plan, whether it's six seats or 20 seats. There's not, other people that have come in have had that seating plan. Most recently, we questioned the one at the lounge on Wyman Street, and they came in with a seating plan. So I don't think it's right to have other people do that. This is something that could be a very quick fix. We can, we can continue the public hearing so that we don't have to go through the re-advertising, and then maybe the Building Department or whoever, if you can come up with your seating plan. How many seats are you asking for? Seven?
If I could get even said--
What does the application call for, Deb? Is it on that, on the application? Because I don't have it up in front of me.
There's nothing.
No? How many seats would you like to have there?
I would say six.
Six?
Three bars on the counter there, and two each on the table.
Yeah, and looking at that, just that explanation, doesn't sound like it overutilizes the floor space available. But again, it's got to be in the application, and it's got to be on the floor plan. So it--
There's a lot of things that trigger the seating plan. It triggers the Fire Department to make sure that everything's clear to get around if it's a tight spot. I mean, I'm not, I don't want to cause them any harm, but you want seating. I don't care how they move it around when it's in there. There's certain area space from the doors and all that you have to go by. I'm not going to quote the building code, but I know it. And I find that there was a person just in before us had a perfect seating plan. Everything in that box was proper. Everything in this should be proper. If they wanted seating, they should have asked to, you know, maybe amend, and we could have done it. But it says what it is, and there's nothing on it.
Madam Chair, I think that we should just continue this. I mean, we could talk back and forth and argue about what should be on it or not on it, but I think that the point has been made by everyone who's spoken that we should treat everybody the same. People should know what they are supposed to do, and the people who are reviewing the applications should know what should be in there, and they should be in there before they get to us. So I move that we, that we continue this hearing until, what time? Next meeting? Two meetings from now?
Next meeting.
Next meeting.
Next meeting.
Fine, I'm sure.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 That does not reflect on you. It just, we all need to be on the same page. That's all.
Okay, that's fair enough.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, please. And we don't have to re-advertise it, and someone will be in touch, Ms. LeBlanc will be in touch with you to connect you with the right person so you can get a seating plan.
Yes.
Okay, and that's Ms. LeBlanc.
Thank you.
Is there anything else? Yes.
I think whoever created that floor plan as it is should be the person to draw in the, you know, because that's a pretty accurate floor plan. From my knowledge, I don't know, I don't have a tape measure, you know, but knowing the floor plan there, that looks pretty accurate. So we just have to have the seats and tables drawn in.
Yeah, so-- Just, you just have to draw some squares in there, and you'll be good to go.
Black line on the edge of the paper.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll still have to do public--
Bill Hewig's not here either.
Yeah, no, we'll all agree.
You said yes? We're going to take a, we're going to take a three-minute break.
Three minutes?
Three minutes.
Does everyone want to put their $100 bill now that it's not three minutes?
Three minutes. Three minutes. Okay, so, okay. Let's call the meeting back to order, please. So I don't know, we wanted to be clear, the next steps, Deborah LeBlanc will be in touch with you.
Yeah.
And then you'll come back in two weeks at our next Select Board meeting, and by that time, we should have the floor plan. So the seating of your, oh, I don't have it, where all your tables and your chairs were going to be located.
Will be located.
And I think that's the only thing outstanding that we're waiting for. So we'll be back in touch probably tomorrow or the next day, but you would meet back here in two weeks so we can continue the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Bye-bye.
Thanks.
Deborah LeBlanc, yes? Oh, really? Oh my gosh. So the, the next item is the special town meeting, insert the articles, and close the warrant. But we need Mr. Bill Rowe, our town accountant, to have access to the meeting.
Evening, Madam Chair.
Oh, hello, Mr. Rowe. Okay. So in the absence, we have Dr. Rapp here. Are there any questions? So they did present to us their articles a couple, a couple of weeks ago. No changes on the school articles. We did have some additional on the municipal side, so Martizdale presented Muddy Pond, and Bill Rowe has, what was it, unpaid bills? Or, no, I'll let you speak for yourself. And we have Walnut Street that we wanted to add. Mr. Rowe?
Yes, that's correct, Madam Chair. There were two articles, standard articles, that go into every town meeting. The first one is for, to see if the town wants to supplement any departmental budget. And the second one is for any unpaid bills that have appeared, have been received after the close of the books. So right now, the 22 books are still open, so, but we, we put that on there anyways, a courtesy to vendors who, you know, either through our fault or theirs, may have been overlooked on invoice, so. And that was it for, the others, like you mentioned, are the Water Department, the Muddy Pond, the school, I was looking for a supplement to the budget of $2,948,500, and then two security articles for $600,000 and $450,2,409, $600,000 and $450,2,409. And then the Walnut Street improvements, $250,000.
Thank you. Any questions on those, the articles that will be inserted? We've talked about these before. Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Gito.
On the Muddy Pond water treatment improvements. If we borrow the money, the Water Enterprise Fund has enough money available to, to cover that, as I understand it.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes, Mr. Gito and I spoke today, and this is an opportune time to do this because our debt service went down, is going down from fiscal '23 to fiscal '24 by $700,000. So if we issued this note with the Mass Clean Water Trust, it would be about $300,000 a year, $350,000 a year or so. So it would not have any impact on the, on the operating budget. So it should be good for fiscal '24. The only thing would be, you know, serious effect on the operating budget would be a catastrophic reduction in revenues, but not from the addition of this, of this debt service.
Yeah. Madam Chair, whoops.
Yes, Mr. Gito.
I mean, that, that's kind of important because, in fact, we shouldn't be, if we need to pay for, for something like this, we should pay for it out of the Water Enterprise Fund, and, because that's what it's for, to pay for, for items like this. And we shouldn't be taking money out of the operating budget for that purpose. I think in the last couple years, we haven't had to put money from the general fund into the Water Enterprise Fund, and I don't think we should start doing that. If we need to get money to run the Water Department, our job is to raise the rates to do that so that we don't cut into, to the other things that we need to do. I mean, if we, if we don't, well, let me stop. Let me stop.
Were there any other questions? We're all set? Motion to accept?
So made. To, to accept, we should insert these in, in order. And I'd like to recommend that we insert them in the, I'll make a motion that we insert the articles in the order in which they appear in the packs that we have. First, the Muddy Pond water treatment improvements. The second article would be collective bargaining, DPW. The third article would be supplemental fiscal year 2023 school budget, expansion of services to meet the needs of the low-income English, sorry, English-language learners and special education students. That would be one. Number four would be school safety and dual-entry improvements at the Daw and Gibbons Elementary School. Number five would be school safety and security video camera improvements at elementary schools. Number six would be supplemental fiscal year 2023 departmental budgets. Number seven would be unpaid bills, and number eight would be Walnut Street traffic safety improvements.
So did we want to vote on these separately? Insert, when I say separately, insert and then close the warrant, or have a separate, one single-- Okay. So I'll ask again, any questions? I did, and Lou was the...
I second Steve's motion then, if there's no conversation then.
Madam Chair, because we actually do have the superintendent of schools here, I would also like just to have him perhaps weigh in, and also the chair of the school committee, if they feel comfortable with that order. That would have you, our aim, as you probably know, is to have this done in one night. And so, you know, it should all happen on the same day. But your order of business would be third, fourth, and fifth, and I just wanted to make sure that you feel comfortable with that.
Yes.
Perfect.
Thank you. Motion was seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you, everyone.
Do you want a motion to close the warrant? No.
Motion to close the warrant?
So made.
Mr. ...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you. Now, going to item number nine, Comcast contract renewal. I see Attorney Bill Hewig is in the audience. Please step forward. If you would like to sit at the table in front or at the table here, then your choice. Thank you. This is on the Comcast contract renewal. I believe it was July timeframe where we left off and we were, you were going back to table, you and Mr. McCrisky to talk with Comcast to do further negotiations. So please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Bill, the microphone has to be.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, members of the public. Yes, it was, I think in July, that we came before you, and at that time, you instructed Mr. McCrisky and myself to go back to Comcast and see if we could get an agreement for a capital grant that was more to the liking of the board and also the Access Corporation. Mr. McCrisky and I did that. We went back, we sat down with Kathy Maloney, the Comcast representative, and also Jerry Buckley, her supervisor, was present for some or part of the discussions. And we got Comcast to agree to a capital grant, which would be the equivalent of 72 cents per subscriber, per month, for 10 years. That comes out to approximately $41,900 or $42,000 a year. And everything being equal, which it probably won't be, but everything being equal over 10 years, that's somewhere around $400,000 for capital grant. The current capital grant is $230,000, so that's a substantial increase for the Access Corporation. But of course, over the last 10 years, there's been inflation and costs have gone up and times have changed. So we were able to do that with the help of Mr. McCrisky and with the help of Comcast, we were able to get 72 cents per subscriber. My understanding is that that is acceptable to the Access folks, and I am pleased to recommend to you the license that's before you tonight. And I'd be happy to go through and summarize it if you like, but you've had a chance to look at it too, I think.
I don't want to rob anybody of the opportunity, but I think I'm ready to vote on this.
Second.
So motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And I vote aye as well. So thank you for all your effort on this.
Madam Chair, if I can, I would be remiss if I didn't take the opportunity to really thank Mr. Hewig for his efforts and his talents on behalf of the, in this case, the ratepayers of the town. Sorry to bring you all up for a quick meeting like this, but Bill is specialized in this area and Comcast knows what he knows, and, which makes it better for us. He did an outstanding job, you know, I can just only voice what our members here were concerned with, as well as the Access Group. But again, that, between the Access and our contract with Comcast is a different thing, you know, and Bill represented us, as he's done in years past, you know, and really shined. Bill, it was nice to listen to you in most of those meetings, which, believe it or not, I did more listening than talking. And we have a great representative with Bill Hewig on this, and I just wanted to make sure I noted that. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. McCrisky.
So before you leave, we have another item that we wanted to discuss, and that's in executive session.
Yes.
And it was update on SMAC-Stoughton Media Access Corporation contract.
Yes.
So is that something that we should discuss in open meeting? I have it in executive session because we have not had an opportunity to review it with you, our legal counsel.
I'm glad you asked that. That saves me the trouble of more or less interjecting. My opinion is that it's not a subject for executive session. The open meeting law says that contracts, which can be discussed in closed session, executive session, are collective bargaining agreements and contracts for purchase of real estate. You can see why those are confidential. An agreement with an Access Corporation, in my opinion, doesn't fit into those categories. So my recommendation would be that you discuss it in open session, that particular item.
Thank you so much, Attorney Hewig. So we received two copies. One was redlined and the other one was a clean copy. Have you had an opportunity to review that?
Yes.
Has everyone on the board had an opportunity to review? We may not make a decision tonight, but we wanted to start our personal, as a board's review. And then bring in, the next steps would be to bring in the SMAC organization and their attorney, I think his name is Joseph Zappo.
Zappo.
Zappo. Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, I regretfully have not been able to complete the review of that document, so I apologize.
So while we have Attorney Hewig, is there any other overarching questions that anyone else would have, even though Mr. Hewig will come back?
Boy, that's a loaded question for this board. Right now, Bill's in, oh.
I mean, I can remember from our last meeting that Mr. Hewig basically said the same thing that he said tonight, that, in terms of our, being an executive session. And I have read the other proposal and having read the red lines, the blue lines, and the final copy, it seemed that the things that needed to get in there from everybody's perspective seemed to be pretty much in there. I don't know if Attorney Hewig would agree with me or not, but I, but that's what, that's what I thought.
It's like a contract designed by a committee, which is what it is, but I think you're correct, sir.
So is there a version that you would propose to us versus what we received from the other attorney?
The, well, the versions you got were a redline copy and a smooth copy. I have no legal objection to the final version of the agreement. As far as I'm concerned, legally, it is satisfactory. There may be policy questions that some of you might have, but legally, I'm content with that version, so I would recommend that if it's agreeable, if the terms are agreeable to the board.
That's the final clean copy, is that correct? Yeah?
Yep.
We can view it?
View it at the next meeting.
Yes, we'll view it at the next meeting. So see you next time. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Unless there's any change, yeah. If any board member would have a change, but that shouldn't be.
Okay. Great. So the item that's on later on will not be on, it will be in the next meeting? The review of the, okay.
In open session.
In open session.
And invite SMAC and their attorney.
Okay.
Great.
Well, good evening, everyone. Congratulations, you have a new license.
May I ask a question of you? If we're comfortable with the agreement, then you need not be present because you've already said it's okay.
That's correct, sir. I'm happy to come here if you have questions and would like me, but if not, I've recommended it, and I'd be happy to give you a letter or an email to that effect too, if that would help.
Thank you.
Well, I just recall that Mr. Cavey said he hadn't had an opportunity to review, and he may have some questions after his review. We would hate that you're rushing through. We have two weeks.
Sorry, this wasn't on. Yeah, I'll get in touch with you if I have any questions. But I'll at least let you know if there's any reason for you to be here next, at our next meeting.
And if I can answer them by email or letter, I'd be happy to, and I'd also be happy to come back before you at the next meeting, if that's what you wish.
Perfect.
Either way, it's fine.
I would like an explanation, it may not be to you, but my fellow board members, they have more in-depth knowledge of SMAC. But in the agreement, it mentions an advisory...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I may, we haven't, we don't have this on the agenda to talk about tonight. I would just caution us that we get into too much conversation on this, on the SMAC contract. It's not on the agenda.
It says...
It's on executive session, right?
Yes, it's on executive session.
Yeah, except that's not open session. And it's not an issue for executive session, it's not on the agenda for open session. I would just caution us, where they're represented by an attorney, that we, you know, we don't make a wrong move here.
Okay.
I would yield to Attorney Hewig if I'm incorrect on that statement.
Yes, please.
It's not subject for executive session. I don't see why you can't discuss it in open session tonight if you wish, but it might be more prudent to put it on the agenda under open session so that everyone who reads the agenda is aware of what's going to be discussed. In fact, there may be folks who looked at the agenda, I think Mr. McCrisky's correct, maybe folks who looked at the agenda, saw it as executive session, didn't show up, who would want to be here if it were in open session. I think that's the prudent thing to do. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, will do.
Additionally, the contract would be part of the open session package that we provide to the public, and I think people will probably want that if it's going to be discussed in open session.
Thank you so very much.
You're welcome. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Same to you, Bill.
Bye. And moving right along, the next is item number 10. I think this is what you requested to put on the agenda, Mr. McCrisky.
Yes, Madam Chair, but I believe...
And that was to discuss armory parking issue.
Yes, but I was mistaken that the board had the parking agreement that was drafted by counsel from the previous time we discussed it, and it would be inappropriate, I believe, to discuss this tonight until everybody's had a chance to review that document before we talk about it. So, and now, that was my, I didn't get it to the board, I just, it just slipped through whether we had discussed it, so I don't think it's right to talk about it tonight. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. And the last item is number 11. Did you have any additional comments? And that is to Vice Chair Cavey and Mr. McCrisky, update on community paradigms.
No, I think all the important items, I was able to squeeze in between other items. I do want to say that, you know, with the experience I had with community paradigm the last time we were searching for a town manager was really, it was an excellent experience. I'm glad that we have used them again, I think once again. I feel like we've had a very thorough process. They've done a wonderful job helping us along the way. And, you know, I honestly, I feel like we have four very strong candidates, candidates that I don't know if we would be able to otherwise draw in if we were only using our own resources. And so I just wanted to express my gratitude for them. Also, working with Mr. McCrisky's really been, you know, as always, I think it's been very successful. I think we've covered a lot of ground in a short amount of time, and so I'm grateful for the work he's done as well.
Thank you very much. Now, the only thing left is an agenda item that's in executive session, and those are to approve some meeting minutes. Are we facing a deadline? Do we have to approve those tonight or can we? Okay, then I...
You just do it and don't take a minute.
Or we can adjourn from this meeting, it's the board's choice.
I'd like to just adjourn, we can do it when there's a reason to go into executive session.
Okay, so...
Just approve them right now, you don't have to go in there.
It's executive session meetings.
Well, I mean, that's if there's going to be a discussion on them, and if everybody's okay with them, there's no edits, we can, yeah, I mean, we can just approve them here and be done. The reason for executive session is so the board can discuss them and make any edits if they wish. If nobody's got questions, we can vote them right here, right now.
So no edits?
Motion to approve executive session minutes of 9:22.
All in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Motion to adjourn?
So made.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Good night, everyone, and see you next time.
An hour early.
Look at that. Look at that, 9 o'clock.